Meeting in order and stand for the pledge.
Approval of the meeting agenda for today.
All in favor? Any questions? All in favor? So.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the March twenty second, twenty twenty two regular board meetings.
Any questions on that? Comments? All in favor?
I.
So. Uh, Gina, anybody for students? No.
She's probably.
Yeah, she has softball.
Mr. Forrest, the floor is yours.
Sure. So we're gonna start with just our debt service budgets. That might look like some changes there. It's just a recasting of where things were budgeted for from one year to the next. We had those faves of one's bonds that we were, that we refinanced, so we got a different budget code for those. You'll see here, we made our, we will be making our last debt service payment in the current school year on our bus bonds. So they will go away. The one thing of note here is this capital outlay. We still, as you know, don't have a New York State budget just yet. Both one-house bills do contain language to increase our capital outlay from one hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are budgeting to do that if that should come fast. If, for whatever reason, that were to be removed from the state budget, our intention would be to leave that in there and then just increase what we're doing locally each year. It would require essentially two projects, but we try to keep that in such a way that it would be, you know, a bigger project, but kind of just dividing it into two pieces because the hundred thousand dollar piece presumably would still get building aid the following year at your building aid ratio and the one fifty would then be amortized out over fifteen years. So we're hopeful that it goes through at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that capital outlay, but we're not, we're not entirely certain at this point, but we'll know as soon as we get a good budget. Then just our benefits. You'll see here, this employer retirement is dropping. That's going from about from sixteen point two to eleven point six percent. Those are your employer contributions. So we're seeing some savings there. Teacher retirement, as I've argued, is essentially flat, nine point eight percent to ten and a half. It's going up just a little bit. Social Security, seven point six five percent of salaries. We've seen a little bit of savings here in workers' compensation. We've had a couple of good years and we're seeing that in our the big one here is our medical insurance going up by twenty-two percent. That's, that hurts a little bit, as you can see. So that's a big number for us. So our benefits all in, you know, you see that one come up four point two to five point four or five million dollars year over year. That is the last of our, the expense side of the budget. The revenue budget is here for you to review. Here in the pilots, you'll see we're going up a little bit. That's just an increase in American Rock salt. We don't have any real new pilots. We've all been, come on, that's just American Rock salt. You'll see we have a two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar piece there in basic formula aid, we call that foundation aid. And as you will recall, Governor Hokel, once she first came into office, promised they were gonna try to fully fund foundation aid over the next couple of years. And that's built into her, it's built into her executive budget. And it's also obviously both of the one-house bills. So we fully expect that that will be coming to fruition. Rest of our state aid is pretty constant year over year. The bottom line here down here is our local tax levy. We're looking at a one point seven five percent increase on our tax levy. I think that's, in my honest opinion, that's pretty modest, given a twenty-two percent increase in health insurance, just general inflation of seven point six, seven point eight percent year over year. I think a one and three quarters percent increase on the levy is, is pretty modest. But we wanted to take a few minutes to talk about local property taxes. It is, I'm sure all of you have gotten new, your letters in the mail with new assessed values. I just want to take some time and talk this through a little bit. There's some perception, let's say, that when my assessment goes up, my taxes go up. And that's not necessarily true. It can be true. It doesn't have to be true. If your assessment goes up, you know, five percent, but the average goes up ten percent, the average increase in assessment is ten percent, you will, everything else being equal, you'd actually see your taxes go down a little bit. So we're just gonna talk through that for a couple of minutes. Excuse me. So your assessed value, it's, it's the assessed value of your property, it's set by the assessor. Each municipality has its own assessor, the real, either elected or appointed. Same assessor can do several different municipalities, it's very common. The assessed value of a property at its, at its most basic level, think of it almost like a proxy for the market value of a, of a piece of property. And so what, what we're trying to do is make sure when we assess property, that the idea is that properties are assessed fairly inequitably, so that, let's say, a fifty thousand dollar piece of property isn't paying as much or more taxes than, say, seven, five, a hundred thousand dollars. So you get the idea there that it's just trying to make sure that because we, in this country, we tax real property, that we're doing that fairly inequitably across, across the board. Reassessments, in Livingston County, they're done every five years. And it just so happens that this was the fifth year. Yeah, I can tell you that I see on the news, there's some municipalities up in Monroe County that fore, did forego their reassessments. In Livingston County, we did not, we reassessed every person in the county. And, and again, just because your assessment goes up does not necessarily mean that your taxes are not full. Talk a little bit more about that. So all of this information here is right from the, excuse me, New York City Office of Real Property Tax Service. You can look them up online and everything that, that we're gonna talk about is right out there. So the equalization rate, let's go back one second here. So these four items that impact somebody's tax bill, some, a person's tax bill, the assessed value, the equalization rate, the tax rate, and the tax levy. So the assessed values set by the assessor, the equalization rate is set by New York State Office of Real Property Tax. The tax rate, we're gonna see in a few minutes, is just a function of arithmetic. What we really control is that tax levy. And that's the only thing we can control. And again, if we go back to what we were talking about on that revenue budget, a one point seven five percent increase in your, in, in the district's levy is, I, you know, would argue is pretty modest. And so that's the only thing that we set. So we're, for us, in doing that, you're looking at two hundred and three thousand dollars of additional revenue in the two, twenty-two, twenty-three school year versus twenty-one, twenty-two. So as we come through here, this is our equalization rate. So what the state's trying to do is make sure that municipalities' assessed values are keeping up with the market, right? So the state says, again, straight on their Office of Property Tax Services, if, if your assessed values are more than your market value, then you're, you're, you're gonna get in trouble, right? So, or your equalization rate is gonna be less than one hundred percent, right? So if your total assessed value and your total market value were the same, you're at one, that's where you want to be. But if your assessed value is only, let's say, ninety million dollars for municipality and your market value is a hundred million dollars, they're gonna give you an equalization rate of ninety percent. Now, how they come up with the total assessed values, I have no idea. I, it's probably pretty complex. I don't know how they come up with that, but that's just their formula. And so what happens is if you have a, an assessed value that's lower than one hundred percent, when you do that, when you do the division by your equalization rate, let's say you have a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, but you're at a ninety-eight percent equalization rate, you're what we call tax on true, your true value of that property is about a hundred and three thousand dollars. So you're, you're gonna, so you're gonna get taxed a little bit higher. And with the revaluation that we just did, right, we would expect all, all equalization rates within the county to be at a hundred percent. They should represent, fairly and accurately represent what is going on in the real estate market right now. There's certainly an argument to be made that, well, is now the right time to be doing it? You know, we know that the real estate market is really quite robust right now. But it is what it is. Again, we can't control when re, when reassessments happen, now is the time. So but that's how that equalization rate can play into one's tax bill. And so the tax rate, it's just a function, if you think about it, and we're gonna look at this in a second, if you think about that, is, is all of the municipalities in the district, take that, your, your tax levy and divide that by your true value, that's gonna get you your tax rate. And so the only thing we control is that actual tax levy. And just for, for, for definition, I guess, we would say, right, if you take your expenses, you subtract from your, your total expenses, your state aid and your federal aid, that portion that you then have to get from the local taxpayer is what we refer to as a tax levy, right? So that's the only thing we said is how much, how much total dollars do we need for our budget from the local taxpayer? And that's, that's your tax levy. And so this spreadsheet here represents what our, how our tax rates come through for each, for each different municipality. So we're looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two tax levy. So you see Genesee there at five hundred and sixty-four million dollars. They had an equalization rate of ninety-eight percent. So their estimated true value is five hundred and seventy-five million dollars, right? And so you go down through, you do that for all four municipalities, and you come up with a total true value of that, seven hundred and fifty-one million dollars. And you take and you divide that by your tax levy, and you're gonna get that tax, what we call that tax on true value. Your tax on true value multiplied by your estimated full value is gonna then give you what each town, your, your particular town's portion of that money. Right? And then that will then give you what your, your town's assessed value is. So last year, you'll see Groblin's down here at eighty-six percent. The year before, they were at a hundred percent, as I recall. So when they go down by fourteen percentage points, but yet Genesee's goes from ninety-nine to ninety-eight, Sparta from a hundred to ninety-nine, and West Sparta from a, I think it was a hundred to ninety-six. The result of that is essentially shifting the tax burden to the town of Groblin, because they're paying more because their equalization rate is going down, okay? Again, in, in this whole table, we set that number right there. All of the other numbers are either a function of arithmetic or given to us through New York State Office of Real Property Tax. And so we're, we're kind of going through this, this exercise right now because with, with revaluations coming out, you know, I've had several conversations in the last couple of weeks about, oh, my gosh, my taxes are gonna go through the roof. Some people, inevitably, they will. You know, I've heard of people whose assessed values have gone from a hundred and sixty thousand to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is that true? I don't know, but in, in the, in this exercise, in this example, that person's looking at a pretty significant increase in their taxes because I struggle to believe that a hundred percent increase in assessed values, the average, right? But if my taxes only went up twenty-five thousand dollars, which is probably close to the average, then maybe as a percent, maybe I'm not gonna get hurt. Maybe because if, if my, if my tax bill is going up, let's say, twenty-five percent, but the average is forty-two percent, then the person at forty-two is gonna pay a little bit more of my taxes. Right? It's pretty complex, but it's, it's, it, you need to think about it in, on both the micro level, what is it doing on every individual taxpayer? We also need to think about it on the macro level. What is it doing for us as a district? Because again, that, that, all we do is set that tax levy. Everything else is either given to us or it's a function of arithmetic. And so, you know, I, I empathize with people. But it's kind, I think it's almost analogous to the tax gap, right? We have a two percent tax gap. That's what the media has drilled into our heads. Even though we know nobody ever has a two percent tax gap, you go through that twelve-step formula and you never have a two percent tax gap. So I think, I think, excuse me, I think this idea that because my assessments go up, my taxes are going up is analogous to that. That may be true, but it doesn't have to be true. So questions? Can I clarify if I thoroughly confused?
No, I understand the math, the, the mathematics, how it works. We've done it before, but concern, which again is out of our control. And the conversation I'd like to have with the assessors is if they're using comps, comparable sales, recent sales, or assessing everybody, that the comps may be inflated. People are overpaying for houses today. You know, to use some, some of the numbers that are being floated around, twenty percent plus is, is the overinflated price. So the comps are inflated, which drives everybody else out. So I, I think the towns that are delaying the assessments for a year are probably gonna be more accurate in the year from now than they are today.
And, and I think here in Genesee, I think, I don't, is the same, the tax date the same everywhere? That I don't know. I think it's May twenty-sixth for Genesee.
So that's the, yeah, the.
The grievance day?
Grievance day is May twenty-sixth.
And, you know, and, and anybody, you know, if, if you or you know people that have concerns with their assessments, you know, anytime I ever tried, when I was banking, I was never successful, but, you know, that could be because I was representing the bank and not, not my own interest. I don't know. Maybe I just wasn't any good at it. I think the future as well. So but I, I would encourage anybody that does have a problem with their, with their assessment or have questions about it, call your assessor and then that, you know, I, at least unless something has changed when I was doing it for bank, that was the only day. Really, you need to be on top of it. Cause that, that grievance day is grievance day. There's not days, but again, that could have changed. I, I'm not in that game. Is there anything else I can ask or answer or?
So from a school perspective, it could potentially take effect, or will take effect September.
Great point, great point. Yes. So, so final tax rules will be finalized on July one. And then they will, whatever those rules are, will be in effect for the tax bills that are printed in late August and sent out and, and first of September, yes.
Town.
July, January one.
And what will you be, what will school base the tax rules on, the assessed value?
Yeah, yep. So we get those assessed values come right from tax rolls from the county.
Yeah, we're not an assessment authority.
We are not.
So whatever the assessment came out at best people's.
Yep.
What I would ask you, if someone's watching, rewatching this from your presentation, what should they know? What was, if they're not sure what you're, you were talking about the numbers? What are your exercises, what for them?
So.
What should they know?
They should know that first and foremost, we don't set your assessment, we don't set your equalization rate. And, and all we touch or all we, all we set is that levy right there, right? And so the tax rate is then just a function of mathematics. So what, what they need to know is we don't set your assessment, we don't set the equalization rate. If, they should know if they have, if they're concerned about their new assessment, get ahold of their assessor. I would say be, be, be prepared for that May twenty-sixth day, if you want to grieve them. And then we, to your point, Chris, when, when the final assess rules, assessment rules come out in July, we will set our, uh, we will set the tax rate, again, just based on whatever that, that levy number is that we talked about here earlier.
We could safely say the rate will be lower, quite a bit lower.
I would expect, I would expect.
Anything else?
You also talked about just the medical costs. You mentioned in the past consortium in Jersey Valley. Is there any movement with them trying to negotiate a number lower? Can you share with that?
The healthcare?
Yeah, and are Genesee a part of that still?
So we're part of what we call Flash Pete, the Major League School Healthcare Plan. The rates were set at either twenty point nine or twenty-one point nine percent. And, yeah, they are, they are what they are at this point, yes. Thank you. Oh, so, yes, just to follow up, I apologize, just to follow up. So this, the revenue budget is, as you just saw, the debt service and benefits was the last portion of the budget that you hadn't seen before tonight. Cindy and I later this week are gonna go through, right now we have a balanced budget. We have a balanced budget of that twenty-one million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars. Cindy and I are gonna go through the budget later this week with a fine comb. I would say the budget right now is ninety, ninety-nine percent done. I just wanna make sure that I didn't leave anything out that she is looking for. Absolutely have to have what have you. I would say by probably mid-afternoon Monday, check your email. We'll be emailing you out both the revenue and expense budget. And if you have any questions on that, obviously get ahold of us. And then two weeks from now, we will be asking for your approval on that budget as, as presented when we email it out. Okay? Thank you.
All right. So we're about a week and a half into our real level assessments. Today, we have about thirty-three students that were refused to take the assessment. Do have a number of absences, so those students will have the option to make up those assessments if they wish to do so. So the number could go up a little bit. Next up will be our AP exams. It's hard to imagine it could be right around the corner. Right, Sid? So they're not too far off as well. That, that tells us the end of the year is coming soon. The Regents exams are currently on. They are gonna be required for graduation like they were in previous years before the pandemic. So our teachers are working very hard preparing students for both these exams as well as the research. End of the year field trips, we are gonna be taking a number of field trips. Most of those are gonna be local in nature. And when I say local, sea breeze, things like that. We will have a, a senior trip. We're going to Dragon High June branch up by Lake George. We're hoping that all goes well, the pandemic doesn't kick up again, which puts that in jeopardy. As you know, we are not doing D C trips. This is the third year in a row we won't be doing it. Just too much of a risk at too high of a cost for families at this point. Graduation, we will be having our typical Saturday in June, twenty-third. This year, we will be at the high school. The memo's gonna be going out after we get back from break to the families of all the seniors. But the college is having construction and they notified us a few weeks ago about the change. A little disappointing, but we're fortunate. If it's gonna happen, it would be this year. Because we do have a small senior class, we will be able to accommodate mostly the families and their guests in our auditorium. We are gonna look at doing, not pre-sale tickets, but tickets so that families are assured to have a number of seats for the graduation ceremony. Last week was a great day. Last Friday, we did a wellness day. Building planning team organized this. It was driven by student interest. Megan Curly, who heads our building planning team, did a great job with the rest of the team, putting together just a marvelous day. As much as work the building planning team did for this, the students did a great job, but we also had faculty really step up to their plate and offer their skills and rein sessions for students. Feedback was absolutely remarkable. Matter of fact, they wanna see this done every quarter, just as a stress reliever. The variety of activities we had really just hit every interest group in our student population. It was a marvelous day for sure. Prom is coming up April twenty-third, so it's gonna be right over at the River Hotel in Mount Morris. For everyone busy with that and preparing for that. So it's exciting that we're gonna have a prom once again this year. This past weekend, we got too successful in our middle school and our high school dance, and they were very well attended. That's one thing we have noticed since we're getting back into a little bit of a routine here, that our dances are really, students attend them at a higher rate than they did before the pandemic. So it's interesting that I think our students really want to just get back to being around their friends. Something we missed out on for a long time. So that's a good sign. And then at the end of the month, we'll also have our NHS and NJHS ceremony. Lot going on and teachers are working very hard preparing students. As you know, March is always a very difficult month. It's a long month. The weather isn't always great, students are worn out, and staff did a great job to get through that month. And I applaud them for their efforts and sticking to getting students prepared for, for the end of year assessment. Any questions?
So Mike, for graduation, plan A is outside or?
No, plan A, it's gonna be only A, unless something happens or.
Okay.
It'll be inside.
Inside, okay.
Yeah, we, I know people enjoy the outdoors. We really got lucky.
Okay.
If you remember, two years ago, it was a downpour ten minutes before the ceremony. Last year, the wind was real heavy, so that impacted student speeches and people to hear the audience. So we want to take less risk, at least.
Can I, I think you mentioned opt-outs were thirty-two?
Yeah, thirty-two altogether. And we only had five in grade six and five in grade seven.
Is that about the same?
No, I think those numbers are much better than, much lower. I should say, more students are taking the assessments. A higher percentage than previous years, right, way above.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions for? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you.
Mr. Beely?
Yeah, so I don't remember what else to ask, but, um, so our, our winter season ended. Again, I don't think I updated anything, but we definitely had a good, uh, winter season. We had a lot of individual accomplishments as well as team accomplishments. You know, our merger with La Bonia in Alpine skiing turned out to be successful with our, the boys in wedding section, the reception title. And Andrew Slade actually going out and representing Genesee La Bonia, but Genesee with the same name is a good performance there. Those things worked out really well. And it's good that we can continue to look at mergers and opportunities for our students to participate in sports. So that went well. We did have a banquet right at the start of spring sports. We kind of wrapped up later. Good turnout. We kind of got a little different this year, but I think the turnout's actually been better than sometimes we have on Sunday. Most of the teams are all showing up. Speaking about the team and the season. Spring sports are going, games are going. I would say, I want to think our balance group does three times. Working pretty hard to get those fields ready. It's always the driest, the best conditions to, to get those fields ready to go, but they've been out there working this first end of the week, getting them turned over and playing a little for our student athletes. So I definitely want to thank them for doing a work on that. I gotta be humble. Just over two hundred students participating in grade seven to twelve. They got fun at the spring, which is definitely heartfelt. It's probably right around fifty-five, sixty percent of the student body that's up to twelve, that are doing something to match up the comp spread that we see that itself there.
Just really half of those, fifty percent of those are on the tracks.
Yeah. We do not have, and I don't know this, but we didn't, we didn't have enough participation for modified softball. So we don't have a modified softball team this year. We have a JV and varsity. That's happened before with sports. Sometimes you just. That's happened before with sports, sometimes you just have a couple of grade levels that are back to back. You don't have that participation number. So right now, we have currently we have four ninth graders that play softball and only two tenth graders. And it's an eighth graders that took the athletic placement process test to come up and were able to make that team. But there is a good number at the sixth grade level that are playing softball. So I think next year will be that it will hopefully come back to be a lot of softball. Those are those. Baseball is leaving this Saturday for Murrell Beach, so they're going down there as planned. See how that goes. They got a couple of games, got a little bit of scrimmages, so they've done a really good job fundraising, communities. They do, we should thank the community, a lot, a lot of businesses have really stepped up. And I can actually donate the money to help them keep the budget going. Maybe a little less on the student athlete and parents. The other big thing that we're doing this spring, just our track team is working with the U of R of fitness science. And they just kind of started that recently. But it's going off to a good start. So, you know, we have access to their medical, people have strength and conditioning coach, sports nutritionist, a psychologist. I would say our trainers, social therapists, and they just continue to grow that. One piece that they're just starting now that will be able to utilize soon is just a coaching piece of it. Where some people will come down from U of R and other areas and work with our coaches as well. It's been starting well, we basically have ten weeks of training, the training sessions. They're coming down, doing ten one-hour training, strength and conditioning, things in the weight room. Nutrition as well, we'll be speaking on that a little bit. And then five one-hour sess- sessions on mindset. They have a lot of software that they're able to kind of push out. So they push out a lot of things through their app that they have. Coaches have done a good job kind of setting that up and push out informational videos on anything that they really want to learn more on. So it's really what they, what they want to take out of it, they get out of it. It seems like it's going well, the coaches think it's going well.
So I think you said this, but everything's working well with the trainers these days?
Yeah, so our athletic trainer, we actually, he, our one athletic trainer left, took a job out to Albany. So U of R did a good job with, she was the head of the program, basically served time here until they were able to find someone. So they just found someone two weeks ago, so she just started.
She dedicated?
She has dedicated to us, yeah. So we finally got someone dedicated back there. She's like going through some illness right now, so she's back here a little bit, probably a couple of weeks. So she's, but she's seemed really eager, ready to go. Bridges from like the luster area, so she's essential five.
Any other questions or comments for Craig?
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as we hear that winter sports are winding down and spring sports are are picking up, we we know that as Mr. Porser did his presentation, the budget season is is here. And it's hard to believe the school year has gone as as fast as it has. Couple of highlights that I wanted to start with were also budget related. So as Mr. Porser said, we don't have a state budget yet. But these were proposals that were the executive budget that both the Assembly and the Senate are supporting in relation to schools and education. So Foundation Aid, they are supporting a three-year phase-in plan. You know, we've heard for years, Foundation Aid has not been fully funded. You know, and a note of interest here is that not everyone is created equal in these equations. And many schools will talk about how this is an antiquated system and that the formula is broken. And so you saw that our increase was right around five percent, so just under two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. When you look at neighboring districts, their increase this year was fifteen percent or over a million. When you look at some school districts in Monroe County, they had increases of twenty-eight percent, twenty-one percent. So anywhere from two up to fifteen million to five million. So what we have done is really advocated for them to reexamine this formula. In the Genesee Valley region alone, there's twenty-two districts. And about half of the districts benefit from being fully funded. And the other half would only see that three percent minimum increase. And we know that with the tax cap at two percent or at least, we'll just say that's where our limit is, and inflation at seven percent and healthcare costs decreased to twenty-one percent. Some of these schools are really struggling to balance their budget. And so really trying to advocate for a more updated formula that will benefit all the districts. Some other pieces that are in both the Assembly and Senate, career and tech educational cap. So right now, we get aid on our career and tech teacher salaries up to thirty percent. They are proposing to increase that to sixty percent. What does that mean for Genesee? That would double our, our CTE, not rebate, what am I, I'm drawing a blank on the word. Refund. So that would be a positive for us. Mr. Porser talked about the capital outlay project increase from one-hundred thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we're hopeful that that will take place. And then another piece that's very important to us is the CSE residential placement. So the state pays approximately thirty-three percent of any residential placement. It is in the executive budget to remove that and have the school districts pay one hundred percent. So both the Assembly and Senate are supporting to eliminate that proposal and for them to maybe pick up that piece. When you have a student who's in residential, you're looking at anywhere from a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars easily in in your tuition and maintenance costs. So hopefully that that one is not accepted. And then our budget vote is May seventeenth. The other thing that did happen last year, absentee ballots were allowed to be requested due to concerns of COVID that is continuing this year. We will have our public hearing on the budget vote, May third, six P M, in the large cafeteria. And on May seventeenth, our polls will be open from six A M to nine P M. So hopefully have a good voter turnout, we we normally do. And so we'll be forward to having our voters come out and support our programs at Genesee. So you also know that we receive federal funds. And the administrative team has really been working hard to really identify how to best utilize those funds and what we would use to implement and help our students both socially emotionally as well as with their learning loss needs. And so we are looking to add an elementary math academic interventionist. This year, we have paid for building level substitutes. We've had an elementary daily sub and a middle school, high school daily sub. And this has been very helpful in helping covering classes when we've had teachers who have had to be out for a number of reasons. So we are continuing with that. Everyone has been hearing how social, emotional and our students' mental health needs is a major focus for all of us. So we are hiring a school social worker to help with that piece. We talked last time that we are bringing back, not bringing back, bringing a program here and having a program for our kindergarten students who will be transitioning from preschool. So with that increased need, we'll have to increase our speech and language services. So we'll need to move from a point five to a full-time position. And then adding a point five middle school, high school literacy reading interventions position for students in sixth through twelfth grade. So really trying to look at our data, making sure that we're meeting our needs and then evaluating these pieces. Some of these positions will be two-year positions. And when the federal funds are no longer available, that that position will end. Some of these positions, like the school social worker, we will look to incorporate that into our budget. We feel that'll be an important add to our district and one that we don't want to do without. So last week, we had our lottery drawing for our UPK, our universal preschool program. And we have eighteen slots for that program. We did have twenty students, twenty-one students will apply. So we do a random computer program and select the names that we, we do it in my office. And Joe Hench is there and Kelly's there, so we just make sure that we're all making sure it's a fair process. And then students who are not selected are on a waitlist. And, you know, for different reasons, we have had students drop out. So even if they are on a waitlist, they may or we may not have a slot moving forward. And work continues on the Field of Dreams. If you're here at any point during the day, you see the bulldozers, the excavators just pushing around a lot of dirt, learning a lot about the construction, building and site process. So as every step they moved dirt, they then do what's called a roll test. And I'm glad to share that our our field is passing, it's passing the roll test. So those are really good factors because we were concerned about what was underneath all of that topsoil just from from conversations of what was in that field and pass. So very happy that it's moving forward and doing what it needs to, to be on track for fall. And then next steps, we will have at our next board meetings, April eighteenth. Campus and SCI will present the value engineering items included in the steam and gym rebid package. So we'll look forward to that. And one last thing, we do have a high number of COVID tests, rapid COVID tests. The state was sending us anywhere from seven to eight hundred tests every week. And for a while, it seemed like we were utilizing a number of tests, never to that extent. And now we have quite the surplus. The other piece with those tests is they expire. So we are looking to send tests home with kids again this Thursday and Friday so that they can use them over the break. And at any time, if any families need a test, all they need to do is just just call us and request them. We can send them home with their their student or they can come pick them up. We really want to make that as easily accessible to our families as possible.
How many tests do we have?
Thirty-six hundred?
Okay.
And that would be what's left after we have eight hundred to give out.
Thank you. Questions? Anybody for community? Nobody said it? Committee, so we finance committee met tonight. Actually heard everything from Ken in terms of that we discussed, we discussed the assessment associated with property taxes and the formulas. We kind of walked through the budget, I think in a couple of weeks, we should be near finals, not ready for the full board to at the next board meeting to to vote on it. And the capital project, which Cindy just talked about.
And we have not had a policy meeting to speak for David. And GCF has not met either.
I did talk to David about three and a half hours ago. He says hi from eighty degrees sunshine. All right. Moving on to personnel.
I would move a personnel consent item, I move personnel consent items, numbers seven point zero two through seven point zero seven.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
Just certainly want to speak to the potential retirements from both Brenda Abrams, who has been a special education year for well over twenty years, and Theresa Miskel, who has been a speech and language pathologist. So just they have touched many lives and very thankful for their services and their greatness.
Yeah, I echo the same. With that, all in favor?
I think.
Anybody opposed?
Under new business, I move consent items eight point zero two through eight point zero eight.
Any questions, comments, discussion on that? Business. None, all in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? So move.
Under section nine, business office, I move consent items number nine point zero two through nine point zero four.
Any questions on the business office items? Thank you to the rotation. You're none, all in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? In that case.
I would move to adjourn at seven forty-six. Just a second.